Good evening. At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Chair, it's been brought to my attention that the agendas that have been provided for the public are missing page two for the agenda meeting and page six. So please advise if you'd like us to take a moment before we start the meeting and prepare copies for the public, or if you would like to move forward as we do, make the copies. It's just that we're not going to have them, the public does not have the agendas as is.
The ones up here also are missing those pages.
Understood.
Okay, we're going to start with the presentation so we can start as the copies are being made.
All right, so let's start the meeting, and I believe you had asked for a roll call, correct?
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Bodak.
Here.
Commissioner Dellisford.
Present.
Commissioner Granados. Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Leon.
Here.
And Chairwoman Palmieri Muedad.
Here.
Chair, let the record reflect, you have seven commissioners present for this evening's agenda-setting meeting.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, can you please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag?
Humbly we ask God, giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated, Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2024 with the office of the county clerk.
Thank you. Tonight, we are going to have just a brief moment of silence. Earlier today, we were made aware that one of our U.S. congressmen, Donald Payne, who represents areas of Union County, passed away. Congressman Payne has been a great supporter of the residents of Union County, as well as residents throughout his district and the state, and we want to offer our deepest condolences to him and his family. Thank you. Tonight, we have three presentations that we are going to begin our meeting with. The first one is going, I'm actually going to call upon my vice chairwoman, Commissioner Leon, to join me in the front. Hello? Is this working? Can you hear me? Yeah? We'll see. Okay. Our first presentation, we are honored to recognize Cesar Vega for his exceptional dedication and contributions as head coach of the Elizabeth Boys Volleyball Team and assistant coach for the Girls Varsity Volleyball Team. Cesar's journey from his roots in Cuba to his current role as a teacher and coach in our community exemplifies hard work and commitment. His passion for volleyball and his commitment to the students of Elizabeth High School are truly commendable. On behalf of the Union County Board of County Commissioners, we extend our heartfelt congratulations to Cesar and present him with a resolution as a token of our appreciation and best wishes. Before we call him up, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Vice Chairwoman Leon.
As a Cuban-American, just like myself, we here in the United States, we commemorate Cuba's independence, even though Cuban is not a free country at the moment, but we want to believe that someday it will be. And Cesar's contributions to the Elizabeth Public Schools and as a teacher and coach are phenomenal, and I just felt that this is needed for him to have because he's doing a great job as mentor for our students. Thank you, Cesar. Come on up.
Very briefly, I'm just glad my family is here to see this, and it's been an honor working in Union County for all these years and being a resident of Elizabeth for almost 30 years now. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'd also now like to call upon Commissioner Mirabella to join Vice Chairwoman and I. As many of you may or may not know, April is National Donate Life Month, and we are honored to be recognizing the New Jersey Sharing Network, which is housed out of New Providence in Union County. The New Jersey Sharing Network is a nonprofit organization responsible for the recovery and replacement of donated organs and tissues for those in need of a life-saving transplant. The organization is also part of the National Recovery System, which is in place for almost 100,000 people on the national waiting list. The Sharing Network Foundation is dedicated to saving lives by advancing transplant research, supporting families, and raising public awareness about organ and tissue donation. They support New Jersey Sharing Network, which facilitates organ and tissue placement for New Jersey residents waiting for transplantation. As we all know, organ donation is a critical issue that affects countless lives each year. It is a matter that requires our attention and support, and the Board of County Commissioners is proud to present a resolution to these wonderful, to this wonderful organization for their hard work and dedication to our residents. Before I call them up, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Commissioner Mirabella.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman. So we have so many nonprofit organizations in Union County. We're blessed that we have so many to help so many people. The Sharing Network is among the very best that we have, and I'm really delighted to honor them during Donate Life Month. I'm an organ donor myself, was one of the first things I did when I got my license about 40-something years ago, but it, I'm proud of it. I think it helps people, and this organization does so much good in our community throughout the state of New Jersey, certainly in North Jersey, and I'm happy that we're able to honor them. Amanda and Catherine, I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. So if we can please have Amanda Tibok and Catherine Diappolonia, please come forward.
Thank you so much. On behalf of our staff and board at the Sharing Network and through the Sharing Network Foundation, we want to thank the County of Union and the Union County Board of Commissioners for your ongoing support in our mission to save and enhance lives through organ and tissue donation. I'd like to invite you all to join us for our annual 5K Celebration of Life in New Providence on Sunday, June 9th, and I'd like to encourage all of you to visit our website at newjerseysharingnetwork.org to learn more about organ and tissue donation and joining us in our mission to save lives. Thank you so much.
I'd now like to call upon Commissioner Betty Jane Kowalski for our final presentation of the evening. And not that we don't love the other presentations, but when we get to recognize our youth, it is the most exciting part of the night, at least for me, I know. In recognition of Arbor Day 2024, the Board of County Commissioners will present a check and certificate to the winners of the annual Union County Arbor Day Poetry Contest. As you may or may not know, the poetry contest is held each year to encourage environmental stewardship and tree conservation among students in grades four through eight in partnership with the Uni-County Shade Tree Advisory Board. So we're going to go through each of the grades. Our winner, once we call the grade up, the student that received the first-place prize is going to read their poem out loud to us. So we have a little token for all of our winners, but our first-place winner is going to read their poem out loud, so we're very excited for that. And I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Kowalski before we call up our students.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and I want to thank the Vice Chair as well as Mr. Nick Nadowitz from the Rutgers Co-op Extension, who has been coordinating the Arbor Day contest for I don't know how many years, but yes. So I would like to say that for all of the commissioners, we are so pleased to have all of you participating, thanks to the participating teachers, to the parents, and especially to our student poets who do such a wonderful job, and we know that this reflects your appreciation not just for the art of poetry, but for nature, and since we had Earth Day earlier in the last week, it's the right time to do it, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So from our third-grade recipients, our third-place winner is Luke Venecore. Come on over here, Luke. And Luke, do you want to tell us what school you're from?
I am from Mountain Park, and I am in fourth grade, actually, not third. New Jersey.
He's like, get it right?
Berkeley Heights. I'm from Berkeley Heights.
Thank you so much, and I'm sorry, fourth grade. I'm so sorry. Okay. Okay. Our second-place, fourth-grade student is Ty Rios. Ty, you want to let us know where you're from?
I am from Westfield.
And what school do you go to?
Jefferson School.
Very nice. Congratulations. And our first-place winner are June Verma. June, what school are you from?
I'm from Westfield Jefferson.
Excellent. Congratulations. So we're going to take a picture with the three of you? And then we will have June read your poem for us. Okay? Do you like to read your poem?
Yeah.
You guys can stay up here and support.
Nature's Heroes. Trees are like nature's big friends, standing tall, their story never ends. Leaves catch secrets from the air, whispering tales everywhere. Their roots go down like anchors so strong, keeping the earth where it belongs. They breathe in bad things, breathe out the cool, like superheroes but in tree school. With branches wide, they give a shade, a chill spot where dreams are made. In forests, magic starts its birth. Big thank you to trees for saving our earth.
Okay. Thank you to our fourth graders. Now we are moving on to our fifth graders. We have third-place Nora Lee. Nora, do you want to tell us what school and what town you're from?
I go to Mountain Park Elementary, and I'm from Berkeley Heights.
Okay. Excellent. Congratulations. Our second-place winner, Harper Feldman. Harper, where do you go to school?
I go to Mountain Park.
In Berkeley Heights?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And... Our last, our first-place winner is Giovanna Fleckah, who is our first-place, fifth-grade winner. And Giovanna, what school are you from?
I'm from Malcolm E. Nettingham Middle School, and I'm from Scotch Plains.
Okay. Congratulations. So ladies, let's come over here.
The Tree Tale. As I sit in my protective pot on the back-left side of the sunlit greenhouse, I stare at all of my green and growing brothers and sisters. "You're preparing to be taken away to the good place," my majestic mother oak would say. A girl in pink jeans and the Save the Trees shirt picks me up by my fragile glass roots and looks me long and hard and decides to take me home. Perfectly, I was planted on a sunny patch in her backyard, thriving like never before, a breath of fresh air contributing to my community. Every day, that girl came outside and watered me. She admired my beauty in her backyard landscape. I became a strong, healthy young tree, dreaming of making my independent change on the world, dreaming of providing oxygen, food, protection, and homes for my wildlife friends. One day, I was no longer in my, alone in my landscape. That very girl, now growing like me, brought home six other trees, adults I looked up to. As I thought about my growth, I felt a peck of joy on my heart, from the birds on floor five, a happy hotel on my branches, with an all-you-can-eat acorn and berry buffet. We were now a team of trees, working together. In the sunlight, our leaves gleamed upon our twigs, and our magnificent bark had beauty like no other. Each day, we flowed oxygen into the wind, passing it back and forth like a flying baseball, fresh air for all. When it rained, our roots sucked up the water like a straw, reducing flooding and erosion in our neighborhood. When the sky grows black, we provide cozy and safe beds for our fluffy friends that want to stay the night. Years later, I realize that still, every day, that girl, that one girl, who now became an arborist, comes out to water me. She waters me with her love, gratefulness, and warmth. I'm now ready to embrace that love and turn it into something for everyone, not just for me or for that girl, for all the community. Even though I've done a lot, I want to make more changes, even if it means standing strong in one place.
This is sixth grade now. Noah Harvey. Can you come up? And our first-place winner is Sarai Johnson. I'm sorry, Sanai, right? I apologize. Do you want to say something?
I'm thankful for my family, God, and my teachers.
And I forgot to ask Noah, what school are you from?
Glover, Cleveland.
Where?
Glover, Cleveland.
What town?
Rowway.
Would you like to read your poem?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's do a picture first, real quick.
Real quick, turn it around. Okay, ready?
Arbor Day. Arbor Day, a time to plant and care, for trees that give us clean, fresh air. We did the earth, we placed the seeds, in hopes they'll grow to meet our needs. We shovel, we shovels water and sun's love, when nurture saplings from below to above. A celebration of life so pure, so grand, on Arbor Day, together we stand. We kill our trees, even when they give us light, our beautiful trees must feel some fright. We chop down trees just to read and write, taking away our oxygen is not ripe. For a tree, for each tree planted, a legacy we write, a greener future oh so bright. So let's pick up our tools and say, Happy Arbor Day, let's plant away.
Seventh grade, our second-place winner is Aiden Katz. Please come up. And tell us what school and what town you're in.
Tarrell Middle School, Scotch Plains.
Thank you. And our first-place winner for grade seven is Olivia Shamraka. Did I say your name right?
Shamraka, it's Olivia Shamraka. Also Tarrell Middle School, Scotch Plains.
So shall we take a picture?
Millions of green leaves, full of beauty, bud from trees during the spring. Full of beauty and elegance, these trees form the air we breathe and the ecosystem that everyone needs. They stand tall against the sky, providing shelter to the animals in our ecosystem and shade to ourselves on a hot summer day. Soon comes the autumn, and the leaves of fall swirl to the ground gracefully, in colors of ochre, bronze, and red most of all. In colorful piles in which leaves lay, kids may cheerfully play. Once the first snow falls, the trees, once barren and lonely, become coated in elegant white. From oak trees, fall acorns during the summer months that are collected and stored by squirrels and chipmunks for food for the long months of winter ahead. Soon comes the spring again, in which the land unfreezes and slowly the snow melts. There, the leaves blossom and bloom in the colors of spring. Birds build nests nestled in branches of trees, the ecosystem thrives. Now try to imagine how the world would be without any trees. Air would become unbreathable, the land barren and brown, no more beautiful colors of spring or fall. Together, we must protect the trees, the plant that provides for everyone's needs. However, to take what they needed, they didn't think, they didn't consider, they didn't sympathize, they didn't care, to take what was actually needed, chop, 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 one by one, with such an excessive amount, and now what is left is stump. She stands there, brittle and short. Yeah, that's not mine.
Oh, I'm sorry. So where does the end of it?
This is where mine ends.
Read us the last part, with "together we must."
Together we must, go ahead.
That's not mine.
Okay, no one heard that, right? Okay, we're going to fix this, don't worry, go ahead.
So which is the end of yours?
Right here.
Okay, so just read.
Together we must protect the trees, the plant that provides for everyone's needs.
And we're going to keep this and do a reprint, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Oh, thanks so much.
Thank you, Olivia. Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that. Okay, our last group, our eighth graders. Our third-place winner is Jessica Laskowski. Congratulations. Where are you from, Jessica?
Elizabeth.
Very nice. Our second-place winner is Mohammed Sanawidi. And where, what school and what town are you from?
Elizabeth, Maple G. Holmes.
Very nice. Congratulations. And our first-place winner is Nyla Lopez. And Nyla, where are you from?
I'm from Elizabeth, Maple G. Holmes.
Congratulations. So we're going to take a quick picture?
Thank you for coming. Can you join us for a picture?
Pleasure, but can I have one more person with me? If I'm all right?
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to read your poem? Okay?
Sturdy and tall, she stands there sturdy and tall, enchanting evergreen leaves blow through the wind, leaving her terpene fragrance. Her hue changes throughout seasons, her charm, her beauty, never fading. They keep her, she keeps herself in place, her tough dick branches robust and strong. She withstands even the roughest of weathers that try to bring her down, yet she stands there sturdy and tall. She stands there sturdy and tall. Nature's fauna looks upon her. Oh, dear wise one, for the years you lived, your branches stayed mighty. They stayed vigorous and grew such a delectable sweet tart. Yet you clean the impurities the world is unwillingly attach you, yet you stand, stay sturdy and tall. Oh, wise one, may you shelter us, provide us nourishment, and be our atmosphere. To show her vigilance, she replies, "Yes, I can, but I can only do so much." As she nurtures them with her branches of care and tenderness, she stands there sturdy and tall. She stands there sturdy and tall. Nature's most developed being since over time, humans looks upon her. We need shelter too, we need nourishment too, we need clean air too. May we take what we need. To show her compassion, she replies, "Yes, I can, but I can only do so much."
There's more. There's more.
However, to take what they needed, they didn't think, they didn't consider, they didn't sympathize, they didn't care, to take what was actually needed. Chop, 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 one by one, with such an excessive amount, and now what is what's left, a stump. She now stands there brittle and short.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, and we're going to do a reprint, okay?
Thank you all so very much. Thank you to the parents, the family members, the teachers, the principals, who have joined us today. It's so important that we honor and recognize our students for all of the hard work that they put into their school days. So thank you all so much. Thank you to all of our recipients and our winners.
Old Rosa Park at me.
Nice to see you. Nice to see you tonight. Appreciate you, bro. Yeah, yeah, man, thanks.
I'll just give our families another minute to make their way out. Okay, we will adopt the communications and the minutes during tonight's regular meeting. At this time, I will first call upon Sheriff Corvelli to present his resolution.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sheriff Corvelli sent one resolution on the agenda. Your consideration, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, seeing that.
Thank you.
I'd now like to call upon Department of Economic Development, Amy Wagner.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Economic Development has 10 resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Department of Engineering, Public Works and Facilities Management, Ricardo Mateus.
Good evening, Chair. The Department of Engineering, Public Works and Facilities Management has 13 resolutions on this evening's agenda. Be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department of Human Services, Director Debbie Ann Anderson.
Good evening, Chairwoman and members of the board. The Department of Human Services has one resolution on, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Director, can you just explain why this is a May-December contract, and are we just picking up something mid-year, or is it something else?
We, through you, Chair, this is a grant, which is 100% funding, and this is the award timeframe, from May 1st to December 31st. So it's a good program that is juvenile diversion, working with the youth, so it's a great opportunity for us to be in this grant opportunity.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. From the Department of Parks and Recreation, Director Vicki Gerbendrick.
The Department of Parks and Recreation has two items on the agenda, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. There are eight business, Commissioner-sponsored business resolutions. Does anyone have any questions regarding those? All laudatory resolutions and resolutions of condolence are from the entire board. Are there any comments from any of my colleagues? I would just like to highlight the last resolution, offering our deepest sympathies to Lisa Bullock on the passing of her father. Lisa works directly with us, and we all share in your suffering. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved now, Chair.
Second.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.